Nonstop, nonstop. I swear. Good morning, everybody. It is Coffee and Politics Online with Sidney Walker. And we have a really special guest today. I have Grand Prairie in the house.
Grand Prairie in the house, yes ma'am.
Yes, we have Grand Prairie at-large council member, junior and... Iz- Iz... I'm gonna do it again.
Izanu, you got it. She got it before we started recording.
Yes, Izanu. I apologize for that. So, I'm really happy to branch out and have more cities in Dallas County on the show to kind of contrast what's going on. So, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming on and talking about your great city.
Most definitely. Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here on Coffee and Politics. I've watched a few of your podcasts and interviews. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And thank you for honoring me and having me.
Yes, and I want everyone to know that your city is set up differently than Dallas, but also similarly. So, you have an at-large seat. So, kinda, you know, let's talk about what that means as a city council member.
That's a really good question. So, an at-large seat is a bit different. Well, back in the day, most cities just had regular all-at-large seats. So, all eight or nine members or seven members of the council would be all elected at-large, meaning that the entire city would vote to elect you instead of a specific district or specific group of neighborhoods.
Yes.
So, the difference between an at-large member means they represent the whole city. A single district member represents a specific district, which is a cluster of different neighborhoods put together.
Okay.
In Grand Prairie, we're a split. We have six single district members.
Okay.
And then two at-large members.
Oh, wow.
And then the mayor, who's also elected at-large, but he's not a council member. He's the mayor.
Okay.
So, we're a split. Historically, in most cities, at-large districts were pretty tough for people of color to win.
Yes.
And they are a relic of Jim Crow, if you think about it and look back at history.
Right.
But when the city's demographics shift over years and people get more activated and vote, we're able to elect people of color like myself and my counterpart, Bessie Adams, at-large.
Wow, that's great. And I just want everybody to, you know, understand that for me, it seems like there would be a bit of dynamics with the district-elected council members and at-large because you're representing the entire city. So, what separates you from, like, the mayor?
Well, the mayor's elected as the mayor, and I'm elected as a council member at-large. But we both run citywide. We both represent the whole city, and we work together. You know, I think it's really important to be able to work with whoever is on your council that's elected that represents your city, both on the state, local, and federal level.
Okay.
Because it's about the people that live in your community.
Yes.
It's about your constituents.
Yes.
I always tell people, it's bigger than just me. I'm just a small piece to the puzzle.
Okay.
But if I advocate and I strive for and work hard for my constituents, I can make their lives a little bit better every single day.
Well, that's always the goal, is to make your voters, your residents and citizens of your city, lives a little bit improved, turn the dial.
That's it.
A little bit more.
Move that needle.
Move the needle. So, I want everybody to know that a council member here has been in office since 2021, and you were also one of the youngest, well, the youngest.
Yes, ma'am.
To sit on the City Council, which is fantastic to hear, uh, 'cause everybody likes to see that Gen X is sleeping. So, it's good to see the younger people are getting involved. So, what has that been like for you?
For me, it's been a blessing. You know, I was elected at the age of 22 years old. I had literally...
Wow.
When I got elected, it was two weeks after I graduated from college.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you so much. I mean, I've grown and learned so much over the last three years. It's incredible to me that I've been on here for so long.
Yes.
And I'm just grateful.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And I'm just grateful to God for giving me the opportunity to grow and learn in this role, in this position. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll just say it right here. Thanks. I'm just grateful to God for giving me the opportunity to grow in this position and to be able to impact lives. Um, for me, politics and government is bigger than just going to council meetings and attending town halls, but also being active in the communities.
Yeah, and online, you have a huge following. Not to cut you off, but every weekend, I definitely see you participating in events or, you know, you're leading the event. So, you have a huge presence in your city.
I try. I mean, I'm young. I have the energy. I have the time. No kids, no wife yet. So, I don't have an excuse. Others can, you know, they have an excuse and could say they gotta take care of their kids. They gotta, you know, be at home with the family. Me, it's just me right now. So, I need to be out there. I need to be planting those seeds and really working hard in my community.
Yes, yes.
'Cause I got the energy and the time right now.
Wow, that is fantastic. 'Cause the younger generations, and I have a 19-year-old, and she is very active politically with, on an international, national level, whereas I still focus on the local thing. So, she asks me questions about that. So, have you engaged more of your young constituents in Grand Prairie to take notice of what's going on in the city?
Definitely. I'm very active in going to the high schools, especially the high schools, and meeting with those young men and women, those young men and women of color, and showing them the importance of getting engaged in the city and being engaged in your community and the impact that it can have. Um, also, I go to the universities, like UC Arlington, Mountain View Campus, Dallas College, TCC Southeast Campus, where a lot of Grand Prairie residents are in these classes, in these institutions of higher education. And I try to show them another path. Um, you may not be considering government, but this is what government can do for you, and you can do for government to achieve and improve your communities.
So, what has been their response?
People are shocked, number one, 'cause they didn't know all the things that a city does and how it's impacting their lives on a daily basis. They've never seen a council member my age.
Right, for sure.
Or that speaks kind of similar to what they understand.
Right.
I remember, um, every year I do the midnight basketball thing with the YMCA, and I go and speak to the young men that come and play. And I was talking to them about the different issues that they care about. I said, "The reason that your issues are never brought to light is 'cause y'all don't vote." We don't ever focus extensively on the impacts and the needs of the younger generations 'cause they don't engage. I told them, "If you want to have your issues be top priority, you gotta vote and be engaged."
You know, that is great that you're doing that, because I remember my young days, I don't wanna age myself here, but my family didn't talk to me about politics, other than my grandmother. I told her I wasn't gonna vote for JWP when Charlotte Mays ran against him, and she was furious. And outside of that, that was it as far as the conversation. And definitely, no one was visiting, you know, the schools. Uh, I went to El Centro at the time. Nobody came and talked to us about, you know, city ordinances, um, public transit, none of those things to, one, have my voice heard, but just to be engaged and understand, you know, what these city ordinances are doing and, you know, how that is gonna impact me later on in life. So, what are some of the issues that you brought to them that they were like, "Oh, man, I didn't know this was going on," and what it meant to me?
Yeah, no, definitely. Um, one of my proudest legislative accomplishments for our city is the Via Grand Prairie Transit System.
Okay.
Because our city is not on DART, so we don't have any form of major public transportation. But we're a working-class, middle-class city.
Yes.
Where a lot of folks, especially young people, aren't able to afford to buy, afford a car right now or even afford gas at $3.29 per gallon or whatever it is for today.
Yes.
With Via, unless anybody in our city, and those visiting our city, download an app unless you go anywhere in the city for $3 a ride. If you're a senior, $2 a ride. If you're a college student, you'll take your UTA, DBU, Dallas County College, Mountain View Campus, and TCC Southeast Campus for $3 a ride.
Okay.
Runs seven days a week now. So, it's an amazing program that helps people in our community. Another thing that I talk to them about, that they really like this one, we raise the minimum wage in our city.
Okay.
For all city employees, both, um, full-time and part-time, to $15 an hour for part-time and $17.82 an hour for full-time.
Great.
Literally creating a living wage in our community.
Yes.
Where anyone that works for the city is gonna get paid a living decent wage that values work.
And they can live in the city.
Exactly.
'Cause I can't tell you how many employees of the city of Dallas live in the southern part of Dallas County. So, you talk about, you know, taking the dollars away from the city and putting them into other communities, and you made sure that the employees there, you know, can enjoy being part of the city outside of just getting a paycheck.
Exactly. We want, we want people to live, work, and play in the great city of Grand Prairie, Texas. That's what we want.
Wow. So, what was their feedback when you, you know, shared that with them?
People get very excited 'cause they didn't know. And we try, you know, communication's a big issue.
Yes.
And we try to push things out and get in front of them, but there's only so much you can do. You gotta go to people and let them know what's happening. Let them know the progress is being made. We got a lot more work to do, a lot more work to do. But we are striving and making a lot of progress, and I'm excited about that.
Wow. So, what are some things, 'cause, you know, we don't hear about the cities in Southern Dallas County unless there's some kind of scandal there, a tornado has come through and decimated the area. So, what are some things that you want people to know that the roadmap for growing Grand Prairie?
Well, I want people to know, if you haven't already came down to Grand Prairie, definitely check out our epic Central Entertainment District. My goodness, the growth that we're seeing there. We got Andretti's that just opened up, Bass Pro. We got a Topgolf coming by early next year.
Really?
GP is booming.
And Bass Pro?
Bass Pro just opened up in July.
Really? 'Cause y'all also have IKEA, right?
Oh, I mean, IKEA came ten... IKEA...
Yes.
IKEA was... IKEA was a cat... Exactly. It was a catalyst for all the growth that we're seeing. IKEA's the one that invested, that bought a lot of that land and pushed for the growth. So, we're grateful to IKEA. Without them, it would've been hard to get the ball rolling.
And I hate to say that I have not been to IKEA, because I went to the one in Frisco, and I hated that drive.
You need to come to the one in Grand Prairie.
Yes.
The one in Grand Prairie, you know, I'm not gonna try to boost my city and make it sound better than what it is.
Please do.
But I've heard that it's the number-one performing IKEA in North Texas. That's what I've been told, and this is what I've heard. Come check it out and tell me yourself.
And for those of you at home who are residents of Grand Prairie, if you buy one entree in IKEA right now, you get two free kids' entrees until the end of August.
Wow.
So, just roll up in there and get you a really nutritious meal. It's a good time.
Yes.
We do it all the time.
Yep.
Wow. So, there's been, 'cause, and I, I put it in my email to you, 'cause my exposure to Grand Prairie was that lovely area buttoned up to Arlington with the apartments there with the Home Depot, Target, 24-hour camp...
That's what my, Camp Wisdom. My parents live on Camp Wisdom at 360.
Okay, yeah.
Very, very nice area too, yeah.
Yes. So, you have had a tremendous amount of growth, it sounds like.
Yes.
Since that time, and I'm talking about an OG time. Yes, sir.
I have, I... So, for those of you at home, the guy running the cameras is trying to ask a question. I'm a resident of Grand Prairie.
Yes, sir.
And we're talking about expansion and growth and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
And from the economic perspective, I love it.
Yeah.
It's fantastic. I do have questions about what does it take to get additional ambulances in my city. I do have questions about why do I not have a hospital within the boundaries of the city of Grand Prairie? And with those two things being factual, I wanna know why we don't transport our people to the indigent care that they're actually approved for. My father-in-law is indigent as hell. He's gotta go to Parkland. If there's an emergency in the city of Grand Prairie, he's going wherever is convenient, to the grid of Grand Prairie. And while all that's going on, while all that's going on...
Jason is giving you a lot of questions, so let's...
I just want, yeah, just so I can, like, get him out and not have to interrupt again, cue you up or something, you know?
No, they're, they're good questions. So, your first question was why we don't have enough ambulances, right?
Right. What do we gotta do? Like, I know that you can advocate all day long. You can go in there and talk to the folks. We need to meet you somehow, some way. How can the citizens of Grand Prairie help to push that project of getting more ambulances and then a hospital?
Okay. I'll start with the hospitals, 'cause that one is very easy. Now, I'll go to ambulances. With the hospital, we've tried our best for the last, since I've been on council three years, to bring a hospital to Grand Prairie. And we've had different hospital operators come in and look at the land on Ossler, where the old Texas, Texas General Hospital was, and they'll begin the process, and then something will fall apart with, with the business deal, and they're not able to, uh, to, uh, complete it and cover. So, that's been a big, that's been a big issue. We have a lot of surrounding hospitals, like Methodist and MCA, uh, Parkland, and they service the Grand Prairie area. And with the way, with the shape of our city, being a very narrow city, putting a hospital there and that more centralized portion of Grand Prairie, it's truly gonna serve about one-third of our city.
Oh, really?
Residents that live south of I-20 are gonna be going to Mansfield more than likely, to Methodist, or in Arlington. Those that live in the northern part are gonna go to Irving or Arlington too.
Oh, yes, that's right. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the shape of the city makes it tough, because the hospital operators wanna make as much money as they can.
Right.
And the way that the fire department does it, 'cause our fire department is our EMS provider, the way that they look at it is like this. If you call and you have an emergency, they're gonna take you to the most nearby appropriate hospital.
Sure.
And you have to ask, "What is nearby and appropriate?"
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They will decide what's nearby and appropriate.
That's exactly right.
Yes.
So, then, that's that first question that you asked about the ambulances.
Right.
What do we need to be able to take people to where they really wanna go? We have to increase the budget, but we have to also be able to pay for it too.
Right.
And we recently, um, by an FNG committee, Finance and Government Committee, back in July, we passed this new system to be able to, um, increase the amount of revenue that we're bringing in.
Okay.
That's coming from insurers, not actual residents.
Okay.
This will help us be able to fund more projects, more capital improvement projects, to purchase more ambulances and more, uh, equipment for our, for our firefighters and EMS providers.
I, may I?
Please.
I've got, I'm sorry, Sid. I'm taking over. I have another question that's similar.
Yeah.
It's in the same vein, but it, it breaks out into residential buildings that are owned by businesses.
Residential buildings?
Yes, sir. Across, literally across the street from where I live, and one house to the right, uh, is a halfway home, or group home.
Yeah.
And then a block down, because I looked into it, it's 150 yards for the city of Grand Prairie. The only limitation to these types of businesses in your neighborhood is that there's not another within 150 yards. And if you're counting, that means two blocks, two blocks. So, we have houses that are being sold, that are being turned into some sort of healthcare, and what ends up happening is those eight ambulances that we have are triggered by standing orders to show up at these halfway homes whenever something happens there. So, three times in the last month, one of our eight buses has been on my block doing nothing. And I don't know what, I feel like there's two angles on that. First is, what kind of ordinance can we do or push to advocate such that residential buildings are residential buildings, period? If you live in that building and it is your only place of residence and you're conducting business, more power to you. But if you're buying a second house so you can, I don't know, put up a t-shirt press or lay up some folks who are recovering from their addictions, I don't agree with that. Is there, what reports or considerations have we taken on the city council there?
Let's start with that first question.
Okay.
Great question. Right now, we're having a major issue across the whole metroplex, 'cause you saw what happened in Arlington with the group homes out there. State law makes it very hard to regulate group homes, um, and any form of boarding houses, any of that. They make it really hard, because the major thing that they have in state law is that you cannot discriminate against group homes. You have to treat them the same way you treat any other single-family house. So, what we're looking at on the city level is how can we create a, a, um, regulation that, for example, the city of Grand Prairie considers a single-family residence, any home that has a family of people that are relatives. But if they have no, they can have no more than six fam, no more than six members that live in that house that are non-relatives, and still be considered a, a single-family home.
Family, okay.
So, we're looking at possibly decreasing that from six to five to four, possibly. That's something that we're looking at right now. We're actually, um, looking at that to see if that would make sense for our city. So, that's why we can't really do too much to regulate group homes or boarding houses, all that.
Is there, is there a punitive thing? Can the city charge these folks who are bringing out ambulances out of our circulation just to deal with the guy who didn't make it by curfew?
They will be billed for it. They will be billed for it. They're, they're gonna pay for it through the billing, but we can't stop, we can't not, we can't not render care.
Sure, right. I just would love for that to pay for the extra bus that we need in the city, you know what I mean? Thank you for answering these questions. Thanks for taking my, uh...
I think you had a separate question.
I might have, and it might pop up, but I'm gonna get Sidney her show back. Let me, let me get this right.
Yeah, I'm gonna do an introduction here, and we're getting some great dialogue. Of course, my videographer lives in Grand Prairie, so I knew that he was gonna be...
And, and he's my guy. We've, we've been, we've been chatting for well over three years now.
Yes, yes.
About many, about many issues.
And really, he's the reason why I got your contact information, 'cause I was like, "Oh, I met him at convention." Yes, I would love to have him on the show and talk about Grand Prairie. So, tune in for sure. Make sure you share and like. Get this dialogue out, because we're always bringing our elected officials that are closest to our doorstep to find out what is going on, because that is what is going to impact you the most. Yes, we all get excited when it comes to the presidential election, but a lot of times, people don't even know who their council member is.
That's true, yeah.
Who their state rep is. And my gosh, these are the government positions that really have the biggest impact. And, and to talk about the group homes, I have had two on my street. And we have gotten some flavorful, uh, people that lived on the street. And I'm sure, 'cause I'm from South Dallas, so we're used to colorful people all the time. But in the suburbs, you have more affluent people living in your city, and they can say, "I can understand that they don't want this in their neighborhood." And so, I talk about having the regulations and kinda not discriminating against them, but putting some controls in place, because real estate is our largest investment. And so, I know I would not want my home value and resale ability impacted by group homes. So, it's interesting that you guys are looking at, you know, putting some controls in place to decrease the number of non-relatives living in one residential neighborhood or residential home.
Exactly. Yeah, we're definitely looking at it right now and comparing ourselves to other nearby cities and what they're doing. Some cities have it at four, some people, some cities have it at five, some have it at three. So, we have to see what makes sense, but at the same time, we don't wanna hinder those that have already established their businesses.
Yes.
We wanna make sure that they're still protected, 'cause we have a lot of great childcare homes in, in the city of Grand Prairie. We have a lot of great ones that take care of disabled people. So, we, we, you have to be careful. You have to be very careful when you're crafting this legislation. You want to make sure that you're protecting those that are established, but also you're protecting neighborhoods, and you're trying to do a balancing act. It's not easy, 'cause someone's gonna be disappointed at the end of the day.
Yes.
And that's anything that you do with public policy.
Yes.
My goal is to do the most good that we can for everybody.
Right, right. 'Cause definitely, property taxes, that's what you guys have your budget from.
Yeah.
And so, you definitely don't want to, you know, be overcome with them, much like with the Airbnbs in Dallas and, you know, Fort Worth Dallas with the plan there with developing, uh, mixed-use family, um, properties in single-family neighborhoods. So...
Let's talk about that as well.
Yes.
Yeah. So, short-term rentals, Airbnb, Verbo, all of that, we hear complaints about it every single day, every single day. It comes up in conversation. The biggest issue that you have is a lot of state law gives property owners the right to do whatever they want with their property, because currently, it's legal to rent out your home, whether it's a 30-day, 50-day, 90-day, or 12-month lease.
Okay.
It's legal.
Okay.
What we're trying to do, well, we're looking at the cities of Dallas and Fort Worth, 'cause they're currently in litigation due to their, they, they created really stringent policies restricting short-term rentals in their specific cities and communities.
Yes.
So, once the legislation, once the litigation is over and there is a result, um, after they're done through the legal process, our city's gonna make a decision as to how we're gonna regulate short-term rentals.
Okay. So, what about Arlington? Did you look and see?
Yeah. Arlington passed theirs, and they limit short-term rentals to solely it, within their, um, what do they call it? Entertainment District.
Yes.
In their entertainment district. Dallas, I think they banned them in all single-family neighborhoods. They allow them in multi-family neighborhoods, but not single-family. Fort Worth, I brought what they did. So, we're, we're...
That's interesting, 'cause I know with two of them on South Boulevard.
The thing is, they banned them, but they're in litigation. So, they're still being litigated. There's, there's a stay on it for now.
Yeah.
So, short-term rental, um, businesses and operators are allowed to continue operating until the law, uh, until the law's upheld or, or revoked, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was kinda shocked with one home turning into an Airbnb. Um, 'cause, you know, South Boulevard and Park Row are the crown jewels of South Dallas. And to, well, actually, there's three in that historic neighborhood. So, it's gonna be interesting to see what ends up happening, um, once that is done. And it makes sense to have them near entertainment districts, because that's, you already have hotels there.
Yeah.
So, it, it just makes sense to do that. So, I know Jason has more questions. We have a new guest member here that's in the audience. Do you have a question for council member?
I think the only thing I had questions about was the inclusivity of Grand Prairie. Like Dallas and Arlington do pride parades every year, uh, that kind of thing.
Speak up, Miss Allo.
Sorry, I'm trying. I'm not used to talking this loud. Um, so Dallas and Arlington do pride parades every year, stuff like that. Uh, but I haven't seen anything like that in Grand Prairie or any resources for LGBTQ teens or homeless LGBTQ teens, anything like that.
Preach.
Um, I know I've seen a lot of problems in schools, like in high school.
Yeah.
It took me a really long time to be able to get the approval to start an LGBTQ, like, club, like a community club. And even when the library, the Grand Prairie Library, the main library, when they did something for Pride.
Yeah.
They were faced by a lot of harassment from people who...
They were what?
Yeah, they had a lot of harassment online, especially from people in Grand Prairie and people who somewhat hold positions of power. Um, and I wanted to know if there's anything being done to protect those people from that ever happening again, or if there will ever be any sort of inclusive area for LGBTQ people to go to.
Gotcha. No, that's a really good question. Um...
Yeah, 'cause Grand Prairie is pretty conservative.
Grand Prairie is culturally conservative. Yeah. Grand Prairie is culturally conservative. The city, when you look at the demographics, is a very diverse city.
Yes.
On a national level, the city's voting Democrat two to one, uh, pretty much. So, a lot of progressive-minded people live in the city, but also a lot of conservative-minded people. And I think that's a good thing. You need to have diversity of thought, just the same way you have diversity of skin color.
Right.
But now, let's talk about what happens whenever people that are within the LGBTQ plus community are discriminated against. That's unacceptable. And you hear that from me, that's unacceptable. That can't happen. If they're being harassed on social media, that's unacceptable. We can't allow, we can't have that. Problem that we do have is freedom of speech. People are allowed to say whatever they can, but they can't har...
That is an unfortunate part.
They cannot harass somebody. That's unacceptable. You cannot harass somebody. Um, we're talking about safe spaces for the LGBTQ community. I like what the, um, the library was proposing. And I think that's fair. Make it inclusive. It was during Pride Month, I believe. They, they had different, uh, events and activities for people of the LGBTQ community to come together and, and to network and to meet each other. Because being a, being a member of that community, I, I can only imagine how tough it is, especially if you come out and have people attack you. So, just know that you have me, a supporter and ally of the LGBTQ community. I'm sure you have other members on our council that are supporters and allies. Um, if there's ever an issue that you hear or you see, contact us. Contact us.
I wanna piggyback a little bit on what Kara said. Um, I think for a lot of people who are trying to get used to what a city's powers actually are, uh, and figuring out how they wanna celebrate holidays, et cetera, it would seem like, "Oh, why don't we have the MLK Boulevard?" Up until a couple, a few years ago. Or, "Why don't we have a city sponsored or endorsed LGBT event, et cetera?" Um, how, like, is this one of those things where you, that a, a group of folks should build it? If you build it, they will come? If it's a, if it's a citizen-organized situation, is there a way to, like, entreat into the council and maybe get a little bit of love that way, you know what I mean?
That's a, that's a really good, uh, really good question. Um, I would say, if people want a holiday to, um, how do I say it, to celebrate that part of our community.
Right.
They should push... They should push for it. That's how I look at it. I, I've always, I've always told you, public pressure is what drives policy.
Right.
If people want to support a community, the black community has to fight, the Hispanic community, we just passed Delores Wertha, um, as a holiday in Grand Prairie now.
Congratulations.
Where, um, yeah, Delores Wertha Day, where our city employees don't have to come in. They get a day off, and they get paid, a paid day off. If people want a holiday for their community, they have to advocate for it. That's what I would tell my friends and colleagues and neighbors that are part of the LGBT commu-
Nothing is given.
Nothing is given. Whether we like it or not, you have to advocate for it, you have to let your voices be heard.
Oh, wow. Yes.
Amen. Thank you.
That is a great question that you brought up.
But I will say again, we cannot allow anybody to discriminate against anyone, especially members of the LGBTQ community. So, please, if you've seen that, say something and let me know.
Got it.
So, that is a great point, and I do wanna circle back with the housing.
Yeah.
Um, because if anyone has gone to Grand Prairie, you see new Grand Prairie, what's going on with old Grand Prairie? Now, saying that because downtown is still reminiscent of what it looked like when Grand Prairie was founded.
Yeah.
So, what are you doing? What are you guys doing as a municipality to update that area so it doesn't feel so stark of a, of a contrast?
Of a contrast, yeah.
Yes.
We're currently working to revitalize downtown Grand Prairie right now. Uh, we just picked a master developer.
Okay.
To help us revitalize, uh, downtown GP. We're gonna have brand-new apartment complexes, really nice apartments. Uh, we're still working out the kinks to see if they're gonna be fully, um, workforce apartments or will be higher-end. We're gonna see. We wanna make sure that people are able to afford to live in downtown and force a living in the city of Grand Prairie.
Yes.
We're gonna have a lot more retail shops that are gonna open up along that thoroughfare. We're also gonna, um, narrow the lanes to have one lane going, one lane coming, instead of the two on, on both sides. Having more walking paths, biking lanes. We want it to be a walkable part of our city.
Community, okay.
A walkable community, to where people are shopping at the shops and not just driving their cars.
Right.
They're parking, or they're calling a Lyft or a Via, or they're riding their bike downtown and, and, uh, patronizing the different businesses that are there. So, that, that's our plan right now, and by the grace of God, before 2030, it should look like that. What, the downtown Grand Prairie would be radically different than what it is right now, and that's what we're working towards.
Wow.
Because that will help reinvigorate not only the business community over there, but the, the families, the, the neighbors that live in northern Grand Prairie.
Yes.
We're trying to bring grocery stores to northern Grand Prairie.
Okay.
That's a major goal. That's a humongous major goal, because northern Grand Prairie is a food desert. There's one grocery store.
Are we not tired of having food deserts in Dallas County?
We are. It, it's a big issue, and it affects usually lower socioeconomic, lower socioeconomic status, working-class people of color, a lot of times.
Okay, so, and grant you my experience with Grand Prairie, so of course, and it may not be Verizon anymore, but.
Texas Trust.
There we go, the stadium there. The car dealership is pretty industrial in that area, so what, what is the population there as far as your, your families that live in that area?
So, Grand Prairie, as of this year, has 209,000 people. I'm trying to do the math to give you a raw estimate of who lives in each area.
Yes.
Um, so.
I know, I threw this on you.
So, no, yeah, I'm trying to do the math. So, north of I, of I-30, there's at least 35,000 to 40,000 families.
Okay.
I mean, 40,000 people.
Okay.
35,000 to 40,000 people that live north of I-30.
Okay.
But south of I-20, we have about a little under, under 100,000, south of I-20.
Okay.
Uh, the bulk of our city's population is gonna be between I-20 and I-30.
Okay.
All of that. That's gonna be, that's gonna be probably 80 to 100,000 in that range. Uh, oh, let me not say that. Between 70 to 100,000 is gonna be in that range, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, I would say, for those that live north of 30, 30, 30 to 40,000, I, I would normally count anywhere north of Maine as north Grand Prairie.
Would you agree?
Definitely agree. Yeah. So, let's say about 40 to 50,000 people live north of Maine, 50,000 people live in northern Grand Prairie.
Okay, yeah, so that's a good portion of people there.
That's about a fourth of our city.
Yeah.
If not more, yeah.
So, what kind of reception have you guys gotten as far as from the grocery stores? Cuz.
People need it. That, that's the reception. People are desperately needing a grocery store. They're tired of driving to Arlington to go, go to Whole Foods or go wherever to get, to get their groceries.
Or coming in to Camp Wisdom to go to the Target.
Or having to drive, drive 15 minutes south to go to Camp Wisdom, go to Target, or to get on 20 and go to Walmart or Kroger.
Yeah.
We do have a nice Sprouse grocery store on, what is that? Pioneer and, and Carrier? Yeah, Pioneer, yeah, Sprouse, great grocery store. We're very grateful to have them there, uh, but we need more. We need more, and we're working towards that.
So, is that Sam's Club? That's in Arlington, but it.
No, that's in Grand Prairie.
That's in Grand Prairie, okay.
On, uh, 20, yeah.
Yes, cuz I used to go there. I was always in your city at one point in time. So, that is, but I know with Dallas, especially in South Dallas, um, Casey's former district, Zane, uh, Zaren Gracie's District Four and Three have gotten that the grocery stores, the top brand names, the big-box stores, they want a tremendous amount of money per square foot, per day, shopping. And it was, I want, if my memory serves me correctly, cuz Courtney Poe came on the show and discussed this, that they want $350 producing per square foot every day in those grocery stores. So, when are y'all trying to court the big-box names? So, what, what have they, you know, said to you guys as far as coming there and establishing a footprint in that area?
Yeah. Some of the big-box grocery stores have told us things that we've heard from big-box retailers. We look at Andretti's, Topgolf, Big Shots, well, not Big Shots anymore, uh, Bass Pro and other major big-box retailers that Grand Prairie's demographics did not meet what they were looking for. We, we all heard this at one point in time. Over time, it has changed and has shifted, and we heard that from some of these big-box grocery stores, grocers. I'm not gonna say their specific names right now, but that's changing.
Okay.
They're, they're taking a second and third look at Grand Prairie, and I would not be surprised if, if I came back on this show in about a year or two with some great news.
Okay, so we have something to look forward to.
They're definitely taking a look at Grand Prairie, and we're excited to see.
That is good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but we need it, we need it, yeah.
Yeah, no one should, should have to struggle.
Yeah.
To have, to have access.
To good food. To food, yeah.
Yeah, it's a basic human need and right.
Healthy food.
Right.
Because we all, we all have access to fast food, but we need access to groceries.
Yes, and not have to drive to a neighboring city or, you know, go to the southern part or, you know, 15, 20-minute drive, depending on traffic, to go to another part of your city, just grocery shop. Cuz my grandmother did that in South Dallas, even though way back when, we had Safeway at one time, and then it turned into Menyers where Cornerstone Church is. We still drove to Turtle Creek Boulevard to go to one of the bigger-name stores, and it, it shouldn't be that way, especially if you are transportation-challenged. That is incredible, so I'm glad that you guys are getting a second look, and people are taking you seriously, because, you know, everybody has the money to spend, and those are essentials of life.
Exactly.
All right, so what else is going on that we need to, you know, take notice with what's going on in Grand Prairie?
So, you know, like I said, it's a fun time to be on the council and see a lot of the growth that's coming. Um, in our southern, in our very far southern sector, near 287 and 360.
Yes.
We're seeing a lot of growth, and we're annexing that area. They're calling it Goodland. Goodland, Texas. We're currently in the process of annexing it.
Really?
Over the next 10 years, we're expecting 40 to 50,000 people to be, to, to move there, um, to join the city's, um, population and join the culture of the city. That area is not, it's not in Dallas or Tarrant County, it's in Ellis and Johnson County.
Okay.
And it's gonna be part of the city of Grand Prairie, and we're gonna see a lot of brand-new residents that are gonna move into the city. And those that live down there won't even know that they're in Grand Prairie half the time, because they're, they're gonna feel, their kids are gonna go to school in Midlothian and Venus, not gonna be GP ISD or Masswood ISD or Arlington ISD. They're gonna be Midlothian and Venus ISD kids, uh, but they're gonna be taxpayers of the city of Grand Prairie and residents of our city. So, that's a big thing.
What brought on, you guys want to annex that area?
It's been in our ETJ for decades.
Really?
Our extraterrestrial territorial jurisdiction for decades, but we made the push to annex it because there's a lot of growth that's coming, and we gotta make sure that we have them, cuz we're, we're gonna annex them in the future, but if we do it now, we're able to be able to afford it.
Okay.
Rather than a major hit to our infrastructure in 10 years. We can slowly add it in now and make sure that, that the folks that are living down there and also the, the developers that are building down there are paying those impact fees.
Okay.
Are paying towards the infrastructure that's being built there.
Yes, so are they trying to do mud taxes for the residents that buy those homes for the infrastructure?
I don't know. I gotta, I gotta check into that.
Yes.
Usually, that's more in communities that are still developing or cities that are smaller. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I would have to check, I would have to check, yeah.
Okay.
Cuz I haven't been briefed on that.
Okay, now, you bring up something that we've never discussed on the show. So, what does it take to annex a city or an, an unincorporated area into your city?
Well, first, having it be part of your ETJ makes it very easy.
Okay.
Because the state has created a lot of laws in the last two to four years, two to six years, that makes it much tougher to annex land into your city. You need the approval of more than half of the residents that live in, um, that portion of, of, of the community.
Okay.
But for us, due to the fact that we, we went based off the old rules, with it being our ETJ, we have the right to annex, cuz it already belongs to the city, it just hasn't been fully annexed.
Okay.
But currently, the new laws that have been passed, we need a majority of the residents of that part, of that, uh, territory to agree to annex it.
And they have?
Oh, we didn't, we didn't need them to agree.
Oh, okay, but, but now, that would be the case.
But now, it would be the case, yeah.
If y'all were gonna annex another area.
Exactly. That's not in our ETJ, exactly.
Wow. And how did that become part of y'all's ETJ?
It happened way before I got on council. It, it probably happened way before I was born. I, I was born in 99, so it probably happened way before that, yeah.
That's right, you're such a baby.
Don't you love hearing that? Born in 99.
I know. I know, but that, it, it brings me back to saying, thank you for getting involved, and thank you for going to the colleges to talk to the younger generations so they can understand they're part of this, and they need to understand what's going on, because it is going to impact them. And not everybody moves away from their community, but you're setting the scene, so no matter where they live.
Yeah.
They will get engaged in the city that they reside in.
I, I love that you say that, um, because one day, I wanna get married, I wanna have kids, I want my kids to be proud of this community.
Right.
I want my wife and my kids to come to state, to wanna stay here. And that's what I say, I want for all these young men and women that went to GP, went to South Grand Prairie, went to Bowie, went to Mass, uh, Lake Ridge or whatever.
Yes.
But are from Grand Prairie. I want them to be proud of this community, and I want them to see that they have a part to play too. And even if you decide to leave, fine, still be engaged in the community that you live in.
Yes.
And, I, I mean, to me, that's imperative, and whenever we, you know, my generation, the, I'm a Gen Z, but the millennials and the Gen Cs are disaffected when it comes to politics.
Mm-hmm.
For good reason. There's been a lot of issues. I mean, for the average young person, buying a home is almost impossible right now.
Yes.
And I always tell people, that's a policy decision. That's a policy decision, that's not, it doesn't have to be that way. We can create programs to make it easier, to lighten the load, and make it more feasible and doable for that generation.
Right.
The same way that we have programs for baby boomers.
Yes.
Same way we have real programs for Gen Xers.
Yes.
Let's do stuff to make people's lives easier and make, I, I hear people call it a handout. I don't believe in handouts. I believe in hand-ups.
Exactly.
I believe as we're climbing that ladder to, uh, economic and upward mobility, we're bringing people with us.
Exactly, yes.
Same thing with city council. I don't care about me. I can't be a council member forever, but I can create and foster.
Policies.
Yeah, create change and foster, uh, uh, an environment where the next person that's progressive, that cares about the community, that cares about working-class and middle-class people, can get in there and make a difference too.
Yes, cuz anytime I see new developments and I see the word luxury, I get so sick of that, because there is no way that a one-bedroom apartment should cost $1,600 a month.
Yeah.
And if you're in college, and of course, even back in my day when rent was 500, 700 bucks a month, you know, and you would get a two-bedroom to split the cost so rent was less expensive, you know, even with the one-bedroom at $1,600 a month and getting a roommate, you're still paying over $800 a month, and you're working part-time while you're trying to go to school. That, that's impossible, and still to be able to feed yourself? Like, it doesn't make sense, and it just seems that we're squeezing out regular commoners that work every day, that want to be part of the American dream, and they're struggling with having housing security.
Yeah.
That is crazy, so I'm glad that you're pushing forward with making those policies, making those ordinances to help everyone, not just those that can afford the luxury of living in your city, cuz that's ridiculous.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so, go ahead and, um, tell us some more about your great city. Um, I know we have term limits here in Dallas for council members and the mayor, although the council member term limits are a bit soft. Do you guys have term limits for, cuz you said you don't wanna be on, on the council forever. Do you guys have term limits?
We don't have term limits, no, man.
Oh, wow, okay, so, is that something that you guys are looking at doing, or is everybody happy with council and the mayor? Cuz your mayor has been there for, what, three or four terms?
Um, since 2013, so I guess four terms now.
Okay, yeah.
For, there are a few council members that want term limits. Me personally, I, I don't support term limits.
Okay.
I've never been a proponent for term limits. In my view, term limits are undemocratic. I think, it's my personal opinion, if you want to remove somebody from office, beat them. And that's how I've always viewed it. I've always viewed it that way because...
Come and take it.
Yeah, come and take it. And a major reason that I'm against term limits, if you look at the history for term limits, they came out of FDR's successiveness. He won four elections back-to-back-to-back because he was a progressive economic populist. He worked for every man, for everybody. He was called a traitor to his class because he's a rich man that advocated for poor working-class people. And that's why he was so successful. At one point during FDR's presidency, he was a Democrat, 80% of the Congress were Democrats.
Yeah.
Because they got so popular because of FDR that if you wanted to win in the North, the South, the East, the West, it didn't matter. You could win if you're a Democrat because of FDR.
Wow.
Because of this populism.
Yes.
Republicans back in the 40s, after they saw that they couldn't beat him after he died, they said, no, we got to create a new amendment and restrict presidents to two terms. I just, I look at it like this.
You bring up a great point with that.
It's undemocratic because you're telling people that you should not be able to choose, you should not be able to have a candidate of your choice because they're so popular.
Right.
But there's arguments to be made that we'll be stuck with the same person forever because they get to a point where the incumbency advantage is unbeatable. And I would tell you, no, it's not. If that was the case, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez could not have beat Crowley in New York.
Right.
He was a number four ranking Democrat in the House.
Yes.
She was a nobody.
Right.
She raised money, knocked on every door in that community and beat him handily.
Yes, yes.
It can be done. It just, it takes work.
It takes work, yeah.
The guy that I defeated, he was in office for 12 years.
Okay.
When he was first elected, I was 10 years old. His family is Grand Prairie through and through. I'm an immigrant. I was born in Nigeria. I moved here when I was two years old. I had no real chance in the eyes of most people to beat him.
And being young on top of that.
Young and black.
Yes.
Let's be honest about it.
And let's just talk about young, not being taken seriously. Because I've heard plenty of times from daykeepers in politics, you know, not having enough life experience, not knowing enough. And it's like, but why are we not fostering?
Exactly. If you want the next generation to truly make an impact, we need to create a foundation for them to grow.
Right.
That's how I look at it. And the reason I bring up being young and black, up until 2021, Grand Prairie had not elected an African-American since the early 1990s.
Wow, wow, Jason.
Oh my, I'm so sorry. What's the question? What's going on?
I thought you had a question. I mean, you know, and that was just something about term limits.
I am so like spread all over. I'm enjoying this conversation so much, I'm forgetting to switch video over here. I'm like, and I sucked into watching it being part of this. So I was just thinking about the things that you were saying. To comment on the idea of term limits. Did I understand correctly, you're not for term limits, is that right?
Yeah, I don't support term limits.
Okay, so yeah, to rephrase, I heard you say if you wanted to get rid of that guy, beat him. I heard you say if you want to take out somebody in office, find a candidate and defeat them, right?
Yes.
I can dig that. I have to be honest, when the conversation of term limits was ever introduced in the first place, immediately I thought, there's some potential there, right? Having the same mayor for over a decade now and wondering what would it take to see new leadership or this new thing really does kind of play to the forgive me everyone else, the negativity of how government works or what is supposed to happen when somebody is elected or empowered. When I found myself thinking from the lens of if a council person could only have two terms.
Yeah.
You're in your second term. And that was the moment I thought, oh, no, uh-uh. I need Junior in there as long as I can get him in there. And then we need other people, create more candidates like you. It's that simple. It's really that simple. I, also, you said something earlier I want to kind of hark it back to. You said we have a communication issue.
Yeah.
Right? And when we take that to the streets, as it were, and we're looking at Gen Z versus elder millennial versus Gen X versus younger boomer, there's, let's say there's a conversation that can be had that's separated in age by about a decade for each of those types of people. The question I have is how do we facilitate that type of get-together conversation? Like, the communication, I feel like, the communication I see coming from Grand Prairie is improving. I know that our media production is getting better. I know that there was a request for work for a consultation to help with that. But I feel like it's been, hey, come hang out with cops. Hey, brother, you want to know what's going on, Grand Prairie? Come hang out with cops. Get yourself a donut. Go to National Night Out. Get yourself a handshake with a cop. Literally like in the next week or two, come on down and take some photos with the cops. That is not going to work for everybody. You're not going to get, especially the younger folks, you kidding me? 18 to 28, they're not showing up to take photos with the cops. So what that means is you're not targeting them. You're literally going, okay, we have 209,000 people. Most of the ones we care about are old, have kids, and I need to deal with them. These youngins just get lost, dude. And in that regard, you're doing a damn good job with the basketball term. I was not a fan at first. I'm one of these guys that's kind of like cracking out of my own little defensive or version of what politics should be. I understand, I understand that even if somehow you were dethroned from your position, that exists and it continues. And all that stuff that you're building through there is exactly anchored into that. So thank you for that. And my last takeaway for communication with the city would be that as fantastic as Epic Central corridor is, just having things like this inside of Epic is enough for most lifelong Grand Prairieans to not even show up, dude. I'm not bullshitting. I'm like, an event at the library, cool. You want me to go to the Epic and walk through this maze of bullshit to find a class and I don't even know if it's free or not and I've never seen the process before? It's intimidating, that kind of idea, right? So I would love to have more of this, brother. Like, I would love to have more actual podcasting-type conversation that isn't from the police department, that isn't like an actual, in my cynical opinion, like a propaganda-type of outlet, right? I'd like more of an actual conversation, which we've been enjoying today.
So now you need to have junior fireside chats in Grand Prairie.
We've spoken about doing something like that. And I used to, you know, make, you see my old videos on YouTube? I used to make political videos, political talk. I just got busy and said, ah, I'll do it later. But having a conversation with y'all and having a real conversation that cuts out all the BS, I love it and you're inspiring me to actually get back to doing it.
Come on, come on.
You really are, you really are, you really are. Because this is important and this is going to reach people that I could not just reach through Facebook, a newsletter. This is directly, exactly. It's a different form of communication that I'm in full support of. So thank you for having me.
Yes, one thing I do want to know, so since you've been reaching out to the younger Gen Z, are you seeing more of them actually coming out to vote in the Grand Prairie elections?
It's increased, but marginally.
Okay.
It's a marginal impact. During my elections, I see it more than in other elections.
Okay.
As it probably should be because I'm a Gen Z-er. I'm within that age demographic. My biggest thing is we have a mayoral election next year. I need to see more of them out. And I try to encourage them. I try to reach them on social media. I try to reach them by going to the events that they're at.
Right.
I still go to the club from time to time. I have a good time.
That's why I do video production, so I can actually go to the clubs and feel good about it.
Like, seriously, I have a good time. I'm a young man.
Yes, you are, and single.
And single?
Don't blush, don't blush now.
I'm plugging for you.
Hey, don't get me in trouble here, man. Don't get me, you know, I'm wearing my suit for a reason.
Yes.
No, but any of the, nevermind, let me stop. I'm not going to go there.
I told you, but don't worry just about me.
I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there. I love the great city of Grand Prairie, Texas. But seriously, I really try to encourage them wherever I'm at. If you're just hanging out with friends at an event or speaking to a large crowd of students at a college or just in the city, have a conversation, showing them the impact. Your voice needs to be heard. Your voice can only be heard when you vote and you engage. Because voting is only one half. The other half is at that council meeting.
Yes.
At the commissioner's court.
Yes.
Coming to the state capitol.
Yes.
Sending their emails. That's how you get in front of them.
Showing up and being delegates during conventions.
Yes, 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 all of that. So I mean, that's how we truly push the needle and we get our voices heard.
Great, great.
And as long as I'm here, I'm going to always advocate for those that can't advocate for themselves.
Come on, come on.
That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about.
Do you have another question or comments? Okay, great. Well, you know, it's been fantastic.
Thank you.
Having such a breath of fresh air on the show. One, representing Grand Prairie, but just bringing youth here. It is fantastic because I'm always pushing for young people to get engaged. And you're setting that example by being elected and being out there. And unfortunately, you know, there's so much voter apathy.
There is, yeah.
Across the board, doesn't matter, young or old. And just trying to educate people on why their local government needs their focus and attention. So thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure and I love what y'all are doing. If I can ever be of service to the work that you're doing with Coffee and Politics, let me know.
Oh, great, yes.
This is an amazing podcast where we're having really important discussions about things that are affecting the lives, the daily lives of the residents in the DMW. So whatever I can do, y'all let me know. But thank you again for having me. I appreciate it.
And when you start your fireside chats, please let me know because I will definitely push those, make sure that people get involved and hear what you have to say about what is going on. And it's unfortunate that, you know, that's the great thing about the internet and that is also kind of the downside of the internet is that we are bombarded with so much information. But we have to start putting focus on what is really important to us. So thank you for having the reach that you have and being so visible in your city and online so people can see what council members do for them. So thank you so much again for coming on the show and discussing your great city of Grand Prairie.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me again.
Yes, and hopefully you will come back.
Always. Reach out, just reach.
Very good.
Whatever y'all need, I'm here.
Thank you so much. Jason, do you have any final words for council members?
Oh, man, I just want to say keep doing what you're doing and I need you to reach out to me a little more, okay? So you know I got your back whatever you're trying to push and I'll do it any way that I can.
I appreciate that.
So just, let's keep that communication going and I would love for other people to have. Dude, we're going to tap into a group of people that are going to just get more involved than we've ever seen before. It's not going to be boomers. It's not going to be, you know, weirdos with agendas. It's going to be people showing up and asking genuine questions at the town halls and bigger numbers than we've seen before. And a lot of it is going to come from some fantastic progressive construction on the north side of town like we were talking about earlier. Just keep doing it, man. And like I said, anything I can do, like if you've got a, you know about a campaign that gets us a fast track with that ambulance or like lets me have a little more talk about where our resources, emergency resources are? Let me know, man. I'm in for it. And I'm looking forward to what you're doing and how you're moving forward with this thing. So just thank you, Junior. Just keep doing the shit, man.
Will do. Thank you, man. I appreciate that.
Alrighty, so again, you know, we took some time off with the show. Last week was a precinct chair vote for State Board of Education to make sure that we had a candidate on the ballot for the Democratic Party. And so also at the end of this month, end of September, Pam Little with the State Board of Education is going to be on the show and here at Kingsman Coffee, so make sure that you tune in, come on out. The coffee house has a great crowd of people. Come and be part of the dialogue. Meet our elected officials that represent us, even if they are not elected by you directly. Come out because you all have an impact on us, whether you're a representative of our city or not. As you talked about, you know, you are looking at what Dallas and Fort Worth are doing with Airbnbs. So we all impact and influence each other. So again, thank you so much for coming on. Look forward to great things from you and guys, tune in next week. We have great shows coming on, so make sure you tune in and show up. Thank you, guys.